Good evening, everybody. Good evening, everybody that came to our meeting. Hello, Walter, and good evening, everybody at home. This is the Borough of Allendale Mayor and Council Work and Regular Session, April 24th, 2025, 7:00 PM. Linda, will you please read the Open Public Meeting Acts announcement, please, and call the meeting to order?
In compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year are confirmed at the annual meeting, are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and on the Borough website, published in the record within the first 10 days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the April 14th, 2025 sunshine notice was sent to the record, the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger, and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and Borough website.
Call, please.
Councilman Yakarino.
Here.
Councilman O'Toole. Councilwoman Homan.
Here.
Councilwoman Lovasolo. Councilman Dellavicio.
Here.
Councilman O'Connell.
Here.
Mayor Wazinski.
Here. Everybody, please rise, salute the flag. All right. So I am going to do a quick agenda review, and then we will go into our budget presentation. So it is our big budget presentation, and we have our auditor here, Paul Lurch. Next, we have our approval of minutes. Actually, I'd like to make a motion to approve March 27th and April 10th work and regular meeting.
Smoke.
Second, please. Second, please.
Second.
Councilman Yakarino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Homan.
Abstain from 3/27 and 4/10.
Councilman Dellavicio.
Yes, I don't think I was there for one of those, and I can't remember which one.
You weren't there for the April 10th.
So abstain from that one, yes, and the other one.
Okay. And Councilman O'Connell.
Abstain from March 27th, yes, through the 10th.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much. We have our second reading for the ordinance to exceed the budget cap. This is something that we do every year. We also have our second reading on the, our code ordinance. We have a non, our non-conforming structures. oh, this is, this has been to our land use board. Sorry, it sounded funny on the, on the title. Where if, if somebody is doing a, a structure that is a an accessory structure, that we actually change the ordinance so the side yard setback is going to be the actual height of the structure versus, right now, we have it at six feet. And some of the structures now that are getting built are two stories, so it's becoming very cumbersome to a lot of them.
Wait, remind me where that is?
Yeah, so it's a second reading.
Second.
And then we have inter, introduction of ordinance 2508. So this is use of public places, definitions, recreational facilities, fees. And then we have our introduction to our budget. Then we have the consent agenda, which some items to highlight. We are, well, a couple of things authorizing to re-release escrow funds. That was for the building that's downtown. We have authorization for Crestwood Lake salaries. We're actually getting ready to open the lake soon, as well as soliciting bills for our concession stand, which is also a very good sign because our concession stand is coming along quite nicely. And we have our list of bills and appointment of a radio dispatcher. So before we go to our presentation, I'd like to open the meeting to the public to see if there's any items that the public would like to comment on. Not seeing anyone, then now I'd like to call up our auditor, Paul Lurch, to give us our 2025 municipal budget presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so good evening, everyone. And as the mayor indicated, we're here to discuss the 2025 budget, which was introduced at the previous meeting. The budget went through a review at the Division of Local Governmental Services, and so it is ready to be approved and voted on by the council. I want to start out by just talking a little bit about 24 and the operations of 24, before we get into, into the actual 25 budget document itself. 24 was a very successful year for the Borough of Allendale, viscerally speaking. A couple of highlights that I do want to point out is that the year-end surplus increased from the year before by a million dollars, which is, again, a positive sign. In 24, the council chose to pay off the COVID special emergency that still had multiple years left. That's really a sign that, that you're doing financially, that you are financially sound and you're doing well. Normally, most communities would not pay that off in advance, so that's a rare occasion to see, which, which is great. I mean, I think that shows, again, how progressive you are. One of the other items I did want to point out is that we also establish reserves. And one of the reserves that was established, but also was increased during that fiscal year, this is a reserve for tax appeals. So what happens is when tax appeals are filed, and if we're unsuccessful, and we need to refund those taxes, and as everyone here knows that when we refund taxes, we not only refund the municipal portion, but we refund the county and the school as well. So they do become costly from a municipal perspective.
A lot of people actually don't realize that.
Right, right. So we're responsible to collect those taxes for those agencies. And then, of course, if, if the collection was an excess because of the values were disputed, we have to refund all those components. So what happened in 24 is that that reserve balance went from $400,000 to over $900,000. So that's wonderful. So now our surplus went up at a, at a higher amount. Our reserve for tax appeals for future appeals is now sitting at that $900,000 number. One of the other reserves, which we do like to see, is the reserves for storm recovery. And so even though this particular year was a light year from storm's perspective, the statute does allow for municipalities to reserve money for a rainy day, if you will, dealing with specifically with storm recovery activities. So that reserve also increased up to almost $500,000 now. So not only did surplus go up, we ended the year a million more than the year before. We've got this tax appeal reserve for, for that particular rainy day. We've got storm reserve now set up for that particular day. And really what that does, it gives you the ability, especially if you get caught in a, in a, in a situation from a budget perspective, that it becomes difficult. So we know that we don't have to budget our way out of those particular expenses. We actually have money set aside for those particular requirements. And one of the other things is also, we'll talk a little bit about when we go through the budget, is a capital improvement fund. So the capital improvement fund is money that's set aside for facility improvements, capital improvements in the community. Typically, what most municipalities will do is they would use that capital improvement fund to fund only 5% of the total estimated cost. Well, you have the ability now because that, that dollar value is increasing, and the fund balance itself, once we get through the 2025 budget process and add what is budgeted to the existing balance, that capital improvement fund number is going to be over $2 million as well. So that's going to provide you the opportunity to also pay as you go on some of these capital improvements. Again, you'll see that if you look at most municipalities that are, are, I shouldn't say struggling, but that are just getting by and making ends meet, they're just providing the minimum, which is only 5% of the total cost, and then we're borrowing the money and going out to debt, something that certainly you don't need to be doing, going forward, looking at these balances. So fiscally speaking, I think, you know, listen, Allendale's in wonderful shape right now, financially speaking. 24 was a very successful year, and, you know, laying that into 25 and 25's budget. And before I actually get into that, I did take a look at the budget cap newsletter that was sent out, and I really think it was an excellent job. And I think everyone who was involved should be commended.
Our, our wonderful CFO, Allison Altano, we, she, she sharpened up her canvas skills. We actually did it for the first time last year. We used to have a finance advisory committee, and then we thought it would just be better to send more detailed information and be super transparent to the public. So I feel like we really, last year was our first year. We tried to get the information out, and, and we want feedback from the public, too. And I think this really was great information, as clear as it could be, I think.
It is. And after I read it today again, and I looked at it, and I'm like, well, there's really nothing for me to say anymore, because it was really spelled out very eloquently and precise. And so I think, listen, you know, it says everything for anybody who's really interested about the budget and what's happening. Some of the highlights for me is, is that when we look at the revenue side, and again, I'm not going to belabor all the details. You know, revenues are solid. The budget on the appropriation side is very solid. But you're not, you're not seeing major fluctuations in one, one area or the other. Obviously, in the revenue side, the biggest increase now is the cell tower, which you now took over, and you've increased, and tripled maybe the, the amount of cell towers. Very difficult for municipalities to come up with new revenues, as we all know, right? It's, we're always trying to tap the same revenues, and that's hard to do, especially when costs are escalating, plus the winnings easily 4% or more, you know, for the last four or five years since COVID. So that's great to see on the revenue side. State aid was down, and that's just from the state of New Jersey, their allocation to us. That was actually a decrease of roughly that $100,000. But really, that's the major real issue or, or item to note. We didn't lose the opera money from last year, but that opera money really wasn't used for operating expenses, which is exactly what you want to do. You want to use it for a capital expense, a one-time funding source. So that really didn't affect us from a tax perspective. And then when we look at the amount to be raised, it's, you know, quote it, 1%. It's real almost insignificant in that portion. And when we look at your, you know, what you've done over the past three years, it's really effectively almost zero. I mean, you know, obviously years before that was a little more, it was a different situation. But, you know, when you look at 23, 24, 25, effectively, it's, you know, it's pretty, pretty much almost a flat tax rate, or, or I shouldn't say tax rate. It's a flat dollar amount to an average house. Because we're doing rolling assessments, so what happens is our values go up every year to true value, and our tax rate then typically decreases because those values are going up compared to the dollar that we're actually trying to raise. So from that perspective, you know, your tax rate's constantly gone down, which what the newsletter shows, but the effect on an average house has really been flat for three years. So, I mean, that's pretty much all anybody would really typically want going through the process. And as far as revenue allocation, you know, as we have the presentation, but it really doesn't change. It really, it's pretty much the same consistently, where your dollar goes or where it comes from. Obviously, in New Jersey, it's mostly taxation, roughly 70% gets through taxation. Tax levy. As, as everyone probably knows, we have, we have two levy caps. My opinion on two levy caps, but we have a tax levy cap, which, which limits the amount that you can raise in taxes. And believe it or not, if you chose to, you could actually raise another $3.2 million. So we can go from a tax levy of 11 million, we can go over, we have the $14.3 million and still be within the limitations. Okay, so, you know, you guys are obviously doing a great job when you see that kind of, that kind of banking or cap bank that's available. So we are below the maximum that we can raise in tax dollars by over $3 million.
Do you see that a lot in the municipalities that you cover?
Well, it, it does fluctuate. I think the hardest cap is really the spending cap, and, and most municipalities do have some kind of leeway, but not 3 million compared to 11. I mean, you're talking 30% or more here, so, you know, that's, that's a large cap. Spending side, again, I think I kind of hit the highlights. I mean, our biggest increases are typically what everybody's seeing, right? It's insurance. Insurance is going up dramatically everywhere. And that's certainly something that, that, you know, it's hard to get your, your hands around from a governing body perspective, not many options on that particular side. So that, that's, you know, that's really your biggest component. Of course, then you have your normal salaries and wages, and then your pension numbers. But again, from a, from just looking at it from a comparative standpoint from 24 to 25, really all pretty well flat, really nothing really stands out. I mean, you know, the library contribution is up a sizable percent because it's up to $10,000. You know, that could be partly due to the fact that we're doing rolling assessments, so always current, so we're going to get a hit, hit a little bit harder on the library side. I'm seeing that as well. And then really, the other items really are pretty much, for the most part, kind of, kind of flat, fluctuating a little bit here. Where does the money go? It really stays pretty constant. I think if you looked at it, and I looked at last year's numbers comparatively, percentage-wise, how does it get spent between public service, insurance? You know, obviously, insurance is, is inching up because we keep having these 20%, 20% increases. So of course, we're at least on the pile, it's constantly going up. It's just, it's a tough scenario. That's just, it's, it's, we're aware of the reality of today, insurance is, is a problem.
Yeah.
And then we go into the appropriation cap. This goes back to 1870s, believe it or not. And so, you know, the state of New Jersey, they, they come up with an idea of we have to try to limit taxes, have a limit on taxes, where they first attacked it on the spending side. But in reality, it doesn't really matter how much you spend, right? It's how much you tax. That's why this is kind of like, to me, it's, it's an antiquated cap, if you will. A lot of municipalities are now having problems on the cap. Like, for instance, we talked about the, the tax levy cap, you're 3 million under, right? On the spending side, you're only 300,000 under. You know, to me, it's, it's, it's what's really relevant is what you're taxing homeowners. What are you taxing the average house? It's not how much you're actually spending. And I think you will see changes in this. We, we spoke to the division, they did allow some exceptions at the end, and I think they're going to try to permanently allow pensions. But in reality, you know, honestly, they should just do away with that appropriation cap. But you're still under it. And then, as I indicated, you know, with your, your total tax, tax rate is decreasing. It's going to go, and I'm only going to focus on the municipal side. It's going to go from .549 to .518. So that's going to be a decrease on, on the actual tax rate. And your tax dollars, we, we looked at last year, it hasn't really changed again. Up by total dollar, but each individual sends in, or homeowner, or a property owner sends in, 26 cents goes to the municipality, all the rest of it, 63 goes to the school, 11, 11 cents of that $1 goes to the county. So we're having our budget hearing, we're having our budget hearing, we're on 26% of the total tax levy. And Mayor, I think that's it, we're away. So if you have any questions, or the public has any questions. But again, an excellent job on the budget for, for 25. And, you know, looking forward, I don't see why you shouldn't continue, really. I mean, I think you're in a position to continue with, with stability.
When you were, when we were talking earlier, you said something about Allendale having a reputation of having very high taxes.
Well, I think that was, that was a reputation that probably doesn't exist or shouldn't exist anymore, right? When you look at it, you know, Allendale typically was one of those communities that people would associate with high taxes. But I think that, you know, when you look at the, the zero, practically a zero increase for three years in a row, and the fact that, I think, looking down at the future, that, you know, you have the, the base and the ability to stabilize this, hopefully for a very long run. I think we're flipping that to a, to a tax, to a community that's not on the, on the upper end of the echelon. And that's what's driving property values as well, too, right? Because I think that, it's that perception, right?
Yeah.
It becomes a more desirable community because they know that, hey, listen, they're stable now. We're not, we're not seeing these crazy, you know, increases.
Yeah, it's true, because people sometimes say that, oh, Allendale has high taxes. I'm like, take a look, take a look at other towns, we don't anymore. And it didn't start just with this administration, the past administrations, too. We've really buckled down, and we're very serious about the budget. You know, you talked about spending, insurance is something, it's one of those, even though we only have 26, you know, percent, and some, some of that 26%, there's nothing we could do, it's statutory, right? Insurance, obviously, being one of those, but we're still looking into that. We're looking into other companies, we're looking into other things that we can do that are being offered with the state spending plan. We always go for grants, always, always, always go for grants. From like, right now, we enjoyed a big grant for the community center this year of $750,000, but we also got another grant for $2,000 just for, to help decorate, you know, and get historic pictures at Borough Hall. So, and, and everything in between, a $40,000 one for our firehouse. We are going for almost $300,000 for a new tennis courts off the Crestwood Lakes. So we're constantly trying to go to the county, go into the state, and utilize, you know, every opportunity that we can to help save taxpayers money and spend money wisely. And we look at that throughout the whole entire year, not just when we're actually planning the budget. So I appreciate that, I like hearing all that.
I do have one question. You said we had 900,000 or 500,000 in our rainy day reserve. Is there any cap on how high that can go up?
There's, there's no cap on the storm reserve, storm trust. There's technically a cap on the tax appeals. It really just has to be certified from the assessor. As long as the assessor certifies it. I've never seen any cap applied to it, but it just requires the assessor's signature. So that's the only caveat on that. But, I mean, I've seen, I've seen tax appeals, not here, but in other communities that, you know, we're going down to Trenton, and we're asking for forgiveness or permission, I should say permission, to spread out payments over five, seven years, you know. It's unbelievable, some of the appeals.
From some of the tax appeal?
Yeah.
In the commercials?
It's all commercial. Because, let's say, at the end of the day, I think, you know, I think when you look financially, you know, residential properties, the values, if they change, they change a little bit on appeals, they're not high dollars. We can pay our way out of it. Now we have a million dollars in reserve, we can get ourselves, that's not an issue. It only becomes an issue when you have a large commercial properties, and if they're successful, and if they're successful over multiple years, that's when it becomes a problem. But we're sitting on a million bucks. I think, you know, you're doing well, so I don't really see any real exposure, you know, from that perspective either.
Yeah, I think the recesses are definitely helping with that, just keeps us right into. Yeah, and as far as just capital in general, we've, you know, we've completed the community center. We're actually completing our new concession stand now. And after that, the next big project would be the tennis courts. And other than that, you know, I think a lot of our big capital expenses are, you know, besides roads and infrastructure.
Ongoing.
The ongoing, right, the ongoing capital, yes.
Newer stuff, yeah.
Community center looks nice, I haven't been inside, but it looks nice from the outside.
Sure, it looks really nice.
Nice to see 220, 230 finally. I finally put the bar, well.
210 now, I had, it was really hard for me.
Is that what it was now? Or was 220?
You know, they're like, you really should.
Oh, and, and you just reminded me, right. So we have the one pilot on 220, 230 now, we're starting to catch the other one.
Yeah, the pilots, and that's going to be going on for 30 years.
Yeah, so.
That's a nice little. And we won the lawsuit, the litigation lawsuit that we had when we purchased the property. We had a contamination issue, and even though we did our preliminary assessment and our phase one, so we went and we fought that, and actually, we're very happy that the judge agrees with us, and we have an $850,000 settlement.
Yes, I remember that, and I remember how runaway that was on a cost. It was like, you know, we thought, well, we're going to have all this profit from this sale, we're going to the community center, we're going to be able to do this and do that, and all of a sudden, that became less and less a reality. That's great, and, and that's a good reminder again, Mayor, because that's also in the budget for the public, that's in there as a revenue, and you're not spending it on operating, you're putting it in for capital improvements down the road. So, yeah, I mean, I think, you know, financially, again, I don't want to beat a dead horse here, but, you know, keep it up.
Thank you. Does anybody on the council have any comments or questions?
No questions, just compliments to the mayor, the finance team, Councilwoman Homan, Lovasolo, Allison, and our auditor team, great job. I work with other towns, and it seems like we're in pretty good shape, so kudos to them.
Anybody from the public wish to comment on the budget? Walter, come on up. Thank you, Paul. State your name and your address for the record.
Walter 38 Hamilton. Curiosity.
Sure.
What's a delinquent tax?
What is a delinquent tax?
Delinquent tax.
Oh, that's for, for, that's what the fund that Paul was just talking about. If people don't pay their taxes, they're, that we have to have a fund for delinquent taxes that, because we still have to pay the schools and the county. So it's a fund, I think, do you have to put money in that every year by law?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. The mayor's referring to the reserve uncollected, which actually funds the uncollected.
Okay, you can explain it better, please.
Right, so what happens is, is that at the end of the year, inevitably, not everyone's paying their taxes. We wish they would, but they don't. And as I indicated before.
I know.
Believe it or not, not everyone pays their taxes on time before we end of the year. And as I indicated before, we're responsible to pay the school all of their money, the county all of their money, and then we have to run our own operation. And so what happens is we have this balance of delinquencies at the end of the year, and we take a percentage of that balance, and we realize in the subsequent years of revenue. So that's the revenue for people that didn't pay us in 2024 that we're going to collect in 2025.
So they still have to pay it, Walter.
It's, yes, it's. It will be collected to usually 100%, if not, like, 100% is very close to 100%, but it does get collected, just a little bit late. And then we collect a tremendous amount of interest on that as well, so, yeah.
Yeah, we're pretty good in Allendale, actually. It's not too bad here. Yeah, we don't have, we don't have that major issue. Anybody else from the public wish to speak, questions on the budget? Well, I would personally like to thank our CFO, Allison Altano, as well. You know, she's just, I feel very confident when we go through the budget with her. You know, we went through it lots of times. There's so many different ways of looking at it, there's so many ways of presenting it. You know, the tax rate, the municipal rate, and we really just wanted to try to make it as, as clear as possible. And if anybody has any questions, you know, we're very happy to ask them. But like I was saying, you know, we really try to, all year, you know, keep an eye on the budget. The, Allison sends budget reports to each one of the departments. We ask them for reports on that, you know, where they are in the budget compared to where they, you know, compared to the year. So we just track it all year long. And, yeah, and we're always looking for ways to, to get revenue. We're actually Suzanne Lovasolo and I, Councilwoman Lovasolo, are going to a mayor's meeting down in Atlantic City, and one of the seminars that we're going to go to is actually going to be talking about different ways for municipalities to increase their revenue. So always looking for creative ways, they're out there, you never know. So I would also like to thank Councilwoman Lovasolo, Council President Liz Homan on the finance team for all their work on this, and Paul Lurch, our auditor, for keeping us in the straight and narrow and keeping us all buttoned up. So with that, we'll continue. Anybody else, any other questions, comments? All right, thank you very much. I will see, you, you don't have to stay if you don't want to. You can, you have.
You can, we'd love to have you. You probably have a lot of fun.
Wait, I, I made sure there's. When the council members.
Oh, yeah.
I, I, we're in good shape. I was a little nervous for.
We had somebody, somebody last minute is on a funeral. We're going to make it.
Thank you, Paul.
Take care.
All right. Next, we have second reading on ordinance 25-05. Can you please read that ordinance?
The following ordinance was first read by title only on March 27th, 2025, and posted on the bulletin board of the lobby of the municipal building and Borough website. Ordinance 25-05, calendar year 2025, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish the cap bank.
We have, I'd like to open up, second reading, open up to the public, ordinance 25-05. This is the cap bank that he was talking about. We are by law allowed to increase the cap, cap bank to, what'd you say, three and a half? So we actually don't necessarily go there, but we want to at least have that opportunity and option if we, if we need to. So with that, I'd like to open it up to the public. Does anybody from the public have any comments on ordinance 25-06? Not seeing anybody? Do I have a motion?
Don't move, Homan.
I'm sorry, that was ordinance 25-05. Do I have a motion on 25-05? Homan, and a second, please.
Second.
Call, Paul.
Councilman Yakarino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Homan?
Yes.
Councilman Dellavicio?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
All right. So next, we have ordinance 25-06. So this is a code, a code in for, a code ordinance. This is actually brought up to the land use board last night, actually.
Monday.
Oh, no, and Monday, yeah, Monday and last night. Oh, no, and Monday, yeah, Monday and last night. We voted on it. So, um, this is to actually to really streamline the process for our, um, our, our residents. So if there is, um, we have this kind of, uh, altering side yard setback. So the larger your square footages, it actually increases the side yard. So this makes it so some people don't actually have to come to the land use board if they are, they are actually building within their, their footprint. Cause sometimes it's making the side yards just too big and it really kind of doesn't make any sense. And this is actually um, in alignment with a lot of other towns do. So I'd like to open up to the public ordinance 25 dash zero six. Uh, not seeing anybody. You'd like to bring back? And do I have a motion to approve ordinance 25 dash zero six? And Linda, will you please read it?
So moved.
Yep. And second, please.
Second.
Second.
Linda?
Um, did I read that one? The following ordinance was first read by title only on March 27, 2025 and posted on the bulletin board of the lobby of the municipal building and borough website. Ordinance 25 dash zero six in ordinance to amend, supplement and revise the code of the borough of Allendale additions to non-conforming structures, chapter 270 dash 37A.
Thank you very much. Next we have introduction to ordinance 25 dash.
Councilman Yakarino.
Oh, sorry.
Councilwoman Holman.
Yes.
Councilman Delaurecio.
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell.
Yes.
Okay. Next we have introduction to ordinance 25 dash zero eight. This is an ordinance, uh, public pay, public places. Uh, this is with regards to our community center. Um, we don't have intentions of charging residents. However, there is some opportunity for revenue. Just recently, we had um, a film crew that gave a donation of $2,000, uh, to our town because they wanted to use the community center for, um, for their lunch. So we didn't have an ordinance in place to collect fees. So if there's any opportunities like that, again, we want to actually have something in place that we could actually charge, you know, outside people, but it's not really going to be used as a place to, you know, get revenue and rent because we really want to keep it tight with our community. Um, but we're just having that just in case. So, um, so that's ordinance 25 dash zero eight. Linda, will you please read the title?
Ordinance 25 dash zero eight in ordinance amending chapter 203, public places, article three, section 19 definitions and section 20, use of recreational facilities, fees, rules and regulations of the code of the borough of Allendale.
Do I have a motion? So moved. Second, please.
Second.
Councilman Yakarino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilman Delaurecio?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Okay. Now, next we have a resolution for our budget. Our budget is a resolution, not an ordinance because it changes every year.
I'm just going to read, um, ordinance 25 dash zero eight has been introduced upon first reading and will be published in the Wednesday, April 30th, 2025 edition of the record and will be taken up for further consideration and final passage at the meeting of the mayor and council on Thursday, May 8th, 2025 at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter.
Thank you very much. And Linda, will you please read resolution 25 dash one twenty-five of the 2025 local municipal budget?
It's a 2025 municipal budget, municipal budget of the borough of Allendale, County of Bergen for the fiscal year 2025. That's my title.
Okay. I'd like to open up the meeting to the public on any comments of the 2025, uh, local municipal budget. Not seeing anybody. I'd like to bring that back in. Um, resolution 25 dash one twenty-six.
We need a motion. You're one twenty-five.
Oh, for the, just the title? Okay. May I please have a motion for, uh, the reading of the title of resolution 25 dash one twenty-five?
So moved.
Second, please.
Holman.
Second.
Councilman Yakarino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lobisolo? I'm sorry. Council. What I, Council, uh, Mendelouiseo?
I'm not sure what I am, but yes.
I'm sorry.
Not a problem. Okay. So now resolution 25 dash one twenty-six was the adoption of the 2025 local municipal budget. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Holman.
Second, please.
Second.
Councilman Yakarino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilman Delaurecio?
Yes.
And Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
All right. Um, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second, please.
Second.
Councilman Yakarino?
Stay 25, one thirty-two. Yes, on the balance, please.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilman Delaurecio?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
All right. Next we have you, uh, our reports. We'll start with our staff report. Allison Altano, our CFO slash borough administrator. I need another word for that slash.
Yeah. Okay. So I want to thank Paul for his budget presentation. I feel like there's not much more for me to say about the budget. Um, but like he stated, you know, the borough is in a great financial position. Our tax rate is continuously decreasing. We're constantly ensuring we're fiscally responsible. Um, the amount to be raised by taxation increased only one percent. That really only comes up to, you know, as he was saying, we're collecting just over $11 million. We only increased it 41,000 from last year. I mean, pennies compared to what we're raising. Um, it's largely due to our increase in surplus, as he discussed. Fair increases in appropriations and our increases in other, uh, municipal revenues. Like he said, you know, the budget newsletter is filled with everything we possibly thought would be informative to the residents in terms of anything large that occurred this year. Anything that we're seeing moving forward. Um, I want to thank Mayor Willsensky and the finance committee, councilwoman Lobisolo and councilwoman Holman. Um, over the last two years since I've worked here, we've all worked really hard together and diligently to really go through the municipal budget and the finances. And I feel that all the work that we've put together, we're going into 2025 with a very solid budget and not just for 2025, but it's really set us up for many years to come between the capital, the reserve, we were able to accumulate this year, you know, we're really in a good place where when I started, there were a couple of places that I was like, oh, there's no like, what if? You know, and we have that now and that's a great feeling because, you know, we're not going to get into that point where we end up like catch up one year. Um, so thank you to everyone again. And then lastly, I just want to thank Chief Dillon for organizing such a great bring your child to work day today. I called him at about 10 o'clock yesterday morning to arrange an event and no hesitation, he agreed. And today him and his officers put together an amazing visit at the police department, followed by a visit at the fire department and all the kids really enjoyed the thing.
All right. Our clerk, Linda Serbino.
Thank you, mayor. Um, Crestwood Lake registration opens April 29th. And the municipal clerk's office will be open, um, until nine PM on May 8th and May 20th. Um, to accommodate the residents. We also offer a notary service. We have, um, three of us in the office are notaries. Um, and also, uh, most, more importantly, the financial disclosure statements are due April 30th.
Did my today.
Next Wednesday. So there are 24 people who haven't filed.
Twenty-three. I did my. I'm on it.
We're on it.
Dottie sent out a second notice.
Thank you. Thank you, Dottie. Oh, I'm glad you all got it because I only saw my name out. I'm like, am I the only one?
She blanked.
No, I got it too. Don't worry.
Well, so the, uh, June 3rd is the deadline to apply for a mail-in ballot, um, by mail. And, uh, early voting period is June 3rd through June 8th. And, uh, you can find more information on elections, um, on our borough website.
All right.
Do I have anything else, Dottie, that I missed?
Dottie, do you have anything to report?
She gave really nice tags for them.
I saw those. Dottie, you just enjoy every day. I love it. It's fun for her. Funny, that's what I say to my students. Chief Mike Dillon.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. So we have our reaccreditation inspection next week. That's a two-day event, uh, much like.
Next week?
Next week.
Oh, wow.
So much like, uh, the budget being audited, our entire department gets audited every three years. And it's, uh, compared to best practices, uh, through the New Jersey State Chiefs Association. So we have a mock assessment two days next week and then I'll be in, uh, somewhere in state, uh, at a hearing at some point, uh, to testify, uh, you know, our, I guess, response to any inquiries the panel may have. Um, usually historically, it's gone smoothly. No issues. We work very closely with an accreditation agency, a project manager. So, um, everything looks good and promising and will be good for another three years. It's a tremendous amount of work. But, um, I do think it, it proves its worth, uh, with our insurance premiums and also operationally. Uh, so we're looking forward to putting that behind us. And then on May 3rd at noon, uh, Allendale Recreation Commission's opening day ceremonies that begin for baseball and softball. And I'm happy to announce that Mark Dunn, uh, will be throwing out the first pitch. So, uh, I'm actually a member of the commission and they are very excited to support Mark. So we all look forward to that.
That's great.
Thank you.
It's gonna be a really nice day. All right. Council reports. Councilman Yakarino.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll keep it brief, uh.
Oh, I forgot you. TJ.
All I'm saying is somebody who had, uh, uh, two kids in my office for take your child to work day. I appreciate that you found something for them to do. Trying to get them on a Zoom call and to be quiet. I think I blew on even though they're nine. So she yelled at them a couple of times already, but uh, congratulations on your budget. Um, honestly, it's, it's one of the most important things you do. I don't need me to tell you that, but, um, you know, you're in great shape, you know, 26 cents of every dollar on the municipal side going. Um, uh, that, that's a relatively low number compared to towns around here. So congratulations to everyone. I know it's a lot of hard work. Um, lots of stuff going on, um, not much for open, but you know, we continue to, um, protect the borough from litigations. And as the mayor indicated, um, there, we were successful, at least in recovering some funds and some of the other litigations and moving forwards. Um, cell tower was for a long time a debate of my existence, but, um, now that the revenues have come in.
Cell tower certified.
Yeah.
Cell tower certified. And really it's, you know, it's something that, uh, will set you up. Um, we're still going to go out with another RFP, you know, eventually, but these are hundreds of thousands of dollars in revenues that we didn't have before. So there's a lot of work.
A couple of tax points.
Right, absolutely. So, um, congratulations again. That's it for me.
All right. Thank you very much. And thanks for coming tonight. Councilman Yakarino.
Thank you. We'll keep it brief. Um, as you, you and I chatted before, the siding is up on the concession stand.
So exciting.
Trying to find Stan, who apparently is the the brain master of the building of the concession stand. So we're, we're still trying to, like we find Waldo, we're trying to find Stan. So we are on track.
Are we?
We are fully on track for a full open of the concession stand. We are going to be receiving bids on the, Linda, was it the 20th? I think we're going to be awarding the, uh, bid for the concessionaire. So.
Yeah, good morning.
Great. So, uh, we are really in great shape with that. Allison's keeping us all on track. Thank you for that. I keep sending, I keep sending Allison texts. I'm like, did I thank you this week for your effort? Um, so really we're, we're in great shape with that. We booked a couple of bands already. We, uh, the Rift is going to be our showcase act for the year. I already got the set list and it looks awesome. Um, Crestwood Lake, we talked about registrations are opening and other than that, we're in good shape. Field three is almost ready to play ball, uh, thanks to total uh, renovation and partnership with the Recreation Commission. So things are really moving along and, uh, happy to report that so.
Hey Tyler, the bid notice for the concession stand will be in the, um, April 30th edition of the record.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman, council president Holman.
Ah, thank you. Um, well, first of all, about the budget, I mean, it is awesome. Uh, you definitely instill a lot of confidence in your thoroughness and your care of what you put together. So it's awesome. And as a bonus, you're a pleasure to work with. So it's really nice. I mean, I feel like I can say that when I, you know, coming into the borough, it really is such a positive environment. So thanks to all of you for making it that way. And, um, while I'm thanking people, thanks to the Allendale Police Department for the program that you helped put on up at the high school. Um, you know, before, uh, these kids are out at some activities and it went through drinking and driving and um, Officer Dunn also spoke there. So it really is.
It marked car up there too, in the front.
Yeah.
I don't really.
Mixed feelings about that personally. Uh, I, I think it was very, uh, poignant to put it up there and it kind of
Probably brought the.
But, uh, you know, just it's, it's difficult to say.
Yeah, it is. It definitely is. But it's such an important message. And, uh, so everybody really did such a great job. So thank you and to all of the um, different departments that were involved in pulling that together. Um, from a water standpoint, it sort of falls under the water and sewer that, you know, our budget is, is difficult to manage as a whole. And we've also spent, um, a lot of money on managing some of the legal issues that we've had and continue to have around uh, the sewers and how, you know, we can ensure that Allendale sewers are used appropriately um, by outside communities as they're being, um, urged and forced to build. Uh, but we have to make sure that we are using legal means to ensure legal and, um, engineering uh, means to ensure that it's appropriate for the Allendale infrastructure. Um, and while we're talking about water today, obviously was a challenge for, uh, the water system, which is owned by Veolia. And we have gotten an update just at 6:15 this evening that I want to read in its entirety, but uh, the boil water advisory remains in effect in Allendale. Customers should continue to boil their water until the advisory is lifted. The boil water advisory was issued on Thursday, April 24th, after a loss of pressure in the Allendale water system. Pressure has been restored. As a part of procedures set by the public health authorities, water samples have been collected and testing is underway to prove the water is safe to consume. This testing process takes approximately 24 hours. Rushing the process could lead to inaccurate results. Our next update is expected Friday afternoon. We understand, this is written from Veolia, we understand that waiting for test results during a boil water advisory can be frustrating and we appreciate your patience. Please know that our top priority is your safety. We are working as quickly and as carefully as possible to resolve the issue. Customers with additional questions can visit mywater.volia.us or call Veolia customer service at 855-367-6708. Thank you for your understanding and continued, uh, cooperation. So that was, uh, from Veolia. Certainly I can share with the public that from the borough and our water and sewer committee that this is a very challenging scenario and it does happen. We have infrastructure and nothing is, you know, is, there are going to be problems. And, um, we were on the phone immediately, myself, uh, Mike Dillon, mayor, everybody trying to ensure that information was, um, disseminated and, um, we're definitely here to do the best that we can for each and every one of our residents. We all live in Allendale and, uh, we appreciate everybody's communication and patience.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Councilman O'Connell.
Uh, thank you, mayor. Uh, thank you for everyone's work on the budget. Another great budget. Uh, Allendale should be very proud. Um, and Mike, the demonstration up at the high school, uh, my kids came home and were moved by it. To the point where he lived in that accident. I said, no, he wasn't even in the car.
Yeah.
I said, the car hit him. So I'm hoping that touched everybody because, uh, I, I know it was tough for you to say, I can see it. But, uh, I hope that touched all the kids.
Thank you.
And on a side note, the scouts are wrapping up a little bit and, uh, there's getting some paint on, uh, the canisters for Crestwood Lake for the garbage and recycling.
Oh, great. When are those going to be done?
I don't know yet.
Okay. I saw the pictures. They look really good.
Let me know because they need help moving them because they are quite heavy, which is good. So they're all over the place, but, uh, the, we're, we're doing the, the red like the barn.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Really nice.
I think so. That's all I have, mayor. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Um, okay. So my report.
We also have Joe on the line.
Oh, Joe.
Yeah.
Joe Delaurecio. Councilman Delaurecio, your report, please.
I'm still here. So, thank you. Thank you, everybody. Uh, the DPW committee, we did meet April 11th. Uh, we had our last meeting.
Talk louder.
What?
Talk louder, please.
I'm doing the best I can. Hold on. I'm doing the best I can. Hold on. Is that better? Is that better?
It's the same. It's the AP.
All right. All right, we had a meeting April 11th, DPW Committee. We talked about field restoration. Councilman Yacarino mentioned a little bit about Field 3. DPW is still going to continue the process to rectify some of the other fields that still need to be done as well as updating the other fields as time goes by. We talked about getting Crestwood reopened and the process is underway right now. Get it back in regular for the summer season. Ongoing pothole repair in various locations throughout the town. Want to thank Allendale Police. I know they're taking a lot of calls and as they drive, they're also making notes of different things that they see on the road and relaying that back to our superintendent, Andy. So I appreciate that. It's a nice partnership. We did speak about potentially hiring some seasonal employees to help out with the summer. So that is ongoing and still being discussed. Some of you may have noticed the paving at the grandstand looks really, really good. I want to thank the mayor and our superintendent and our police department for coordinating that during our spring break shutdown to avoid any major issues with parents picking up kids. And let's see, I'm trying to make this quick. That's pretty much everything I have. There is one, I just want to say thank you. So a lot of you know, in West Maple, there was a section of sidewalk that was dead-ended, right? So the kids would walk up West Maple towards Northern Highlands. They would hit a patch of dirt. They'd have to walk in the street for about 30 feet when they would get back onto the sidewalk at Northern Highlands. Andy and some of the guys took it upon themselves to go up there and clear a section of dirt. So now the kids are able to at least walk continually without going in the street. And when school is out, the DPW will be addressing that and try to do more of a permanent fix. So that's, that's everything. Hopefully everybody can hear that. And thank you for accommodating my low talking voice.
Oh, that's great. I didn't realize Andy did that yet. That's super. I know the school really wanted that done as well. So that's going to be, that's going to be great for the kids walking to school. Thank you, Joe. So my report, just real quickly on affordable housing, it's ongoing. We did come to our settlement of 200 units down from 260 units. So the next deadline is June where we have to figure out what our realistic development potential actually is and then find out where we're going to build it and then figure out what we're going to do with the unmet need. I feel like it's getting a little bit of attention. There was just an assembly woman from South Jersey that is talking to the DCA about how are we supposed to do this? How are these towns supposed to build when there is no land? Not really getting traction that way because it really isn't the legislature. But I do think that if enough people speak up, they'll realize that the plan is flawed, not that anybody's against affordable housing, including Allendale. It's that we want to do it in a way that it doesn't ruin the fabric, not just of our town, but of New Jersey. And, and I keep saying this, if I say it once, I'll say it a million times. It's not necessarily even just now. It's going to be in 10 years from now or 20 years from now because these unmet need numbers are in the hundreds. We still have hundreds from our third round. We're going to have hundreds from our, our fourth round. And if they think that those are going to get built, that means every developable land, every piece of land or house is going to be high-density housing. So it is absolutely going to change the fabric of New Jersey. Infrastructure cannot handle it. We have flooding as it is. We're already having an infrastructure issue because Saddle River's Fairshire Housing happens to be on Allendale border. Saddle River does not have the infrastructure for multi-homes, never mind 505. So they don't have a sewer system. They use septic tanks. So we are very diligently working with them to make sure that our infrastructure is protected because they expect to come through our sewer line. So that is something that is ongoing, that we're talking about almost daily with elected officials, with attorneys, with engineers. So it's, it's a big, big process that we've been going through. We met with New Jersey Transit and actually it was a very good meeting. In the next couple of days, you will see new signs for our transit lot. We are redoing the whole entire transit lot. We are first starting with, the first rollout is going to be some signage. A lot of people do not realize that there is tons of commuter, not just commuter parking, residential parking there for when people are shopping, when people go to our restaurants, a lot of times on the weekends, it gets a little crowded. So we're going to try to direct people there. It does need to be paved, needs to be restripped. There needs to be better signage. But right now we have more decorative signs that are going to get people in there and then we're going to work out signage where, where retail people can park and then where the commuter people can park. So that's going to be a good project. We had a land use meeting. As you saw, we just changed two ordinances on our, on the books that are, we just felt weren't really in, in keeping up with the character of the town anymore. And we plan on looking at some more. We're actually going to be looking at the fence ordinance next. And we're also going to actually be looking at Joe's land use packet, Joe. We've, we have one version of it started and we're going to just meet and comment out, which is basically is a land use packet, user-friendly land use packet. So when residents come in and they want to do an addition on their house, they get this big fat packet, very intimidating. It's very confusing. So we want to make it super user-friendly. So thank you to Councilman DeLuisio for starting the ball with us. And we're going to take it and try to make it very easy for residents, so to accommodate them. Again, thank you, everybody with the budget, especially Allison. And I just wanted to echo what Council President Holman said about the water. It was definitely, you know, a challenging day for us. We, we know that Veolia is doing the best they can. I know sometimes the messaging does not seem to be as fast as we want it or what we want to hear. But I do feel that our water system is in the best hands. We would be having the same issues or more if Allendale still owned the water system. So unfortunately, this is what's happening and we will get to the bottom of it and we are addressing, you know, the messaging that's sending out and the timing of it as much as we can. So with that, any new business? Any old business? I'd like to open it up to the community, to the public one more time before we go. Anybody from the public wish to speak? Walter? Come on up.
Walter Webber Series, Hamilton. Would you elaborate on that water? Water?
I'm sorry, what, what's your question about the water? Do you have a question or you want me to?
In your report, I thought I heard you say we were advised to boil water?
Yes. As of, I think it was about 11:30 this morning, we were given a notification by Veolia that we had, since we had lost pressure, that a boil water advisory was in effect. Yes, so you should have received a reverse 911 call as well as a constant contact.
An email. Did you get an email?
Which I signed you up for emails. You've got another emails.
Email? I don't check them every day.
Yeah, and you should have, if you're, you should have a reverse 911 unless you don't have your phone number registered.
The phone number should be registered.
I'm here right now. I'm looking at it. If you want to come over, I have the number. Ending in 8666.
That's not your phone. Oh, that's your cell phone. This is, if you, it only goes to your cell phone if you register, but it goes to your regular line regardless. So, so Walter, you just want to, you just want to boil your water tonight and tomorrow till about, hopefully around noon, they'll lift it. It's a, it's hopefully cautionary and everything will be fine, but they have to do this by, by New Jersey state law from the DEP because the water pressure dropped in some areas of town today.
Because I drank it all the time.
I know, I did too. I drank like a gallon today.
Next question. Did I hear anything about that?
Yes, at the last meeting, we approved the solicitation to advertise for the grant through the county. We worked with our grant writer and our municipal engineer as of last week and all of the necessary materials for which we needed to encumber were sent to the grant writer and that was submitted to the county as of last, or actually this week rather. So we are in good shape to hopefully receive that. That will be a 2026 project.
The mural, actually, I was just down there looking at it. We're hoping to get it installed by June.
Because I saw some activity going on over there.
Yeah, we're trying to get the wall and the wires kind of cleaned up. So it's, I, I took a sneak peek. It looks really cool. It's going to be very, very cool looking.
I hope so.
Me too.
Thirdly, not all of you are using this thing adequately.
Oh, boy.
I mean, I can hear you because I'm close to you, but it's not over the speaker system. It still hums.
Yeah.
You can wave us down if we're not, if we're not projecting when you can't hear, please. You can.
Wave at you?
Yeah.
I'd love to.
Thank you, Walter.
I do.
All right, anybody else from the public? Not seeing anybody. Motion to adjourn. Second. Oh wait, I had one more thing to say. Sorry. I just wanted to say, no, I have to say, I thought the Take Your Kid to School Day was so freaking cute today. Allison sent me pictures and I just think it's so nice that all of the, like from different departments, the police, the admin, the DPW, your kids all got along. You went around.
And I forgot to mention that also our construction code official, Anthony, took the kids from the Borough Hall to Crestwood Lake. My son really wanted to run in it because there was no water. So he ran around that. Then he took them to the celery farm. They did see a snake. And then he took the Dairy Queen, but he called me. There was an issue because Dairy Queen's machine was still freezing. So he said, but don't worry, we're going to wait the five minutes. I have them at the pickle factory right now and then we're going to go back.
And that's why you're here and everything.
Took them outside. He got them. So everybody really did it. It was.
I just thought it was good.
Like, you know, one big happy family.
All right, good night, everybody.
Have a good night, Joe.
Thank you.
You need one more motion.
I do. Thank you.
So moved.
So moved. We're adjourned.
All in favor.
Hi.
What's up? How are you?